Wednesday, May 6, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. Ms. Allen, Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Wannarski. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The states of America.
To the republic which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with every being just as one.
Keys, 2020, and bills are taken on May 1st, 2020. Ms. Allen. Um, Mr.
Yes. That could be a good or a bad thing, but. Thank you.
Do you want me to start with the ordinances then? Okay. Council file 16156, official ordinance number 1220. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,866,324 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the CBG cares, CB19C projects. I'm Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen. The council file ordinance bill number 16156, and now known as official ordinance number 122020, finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Ms. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Wannarski. City council passed official file ordinance number 122020, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council file 16157, official ordinance number 132020. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $931,503 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the ESG cares, ESG 19C projects. I'm Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance bill number 16157, and now known as official file ordinance number 132020, we finally passed by the city council.
Ms. Allen. I don't have the agenda in my pack. Oh, there it is. Never mind. I got it.
Ms. Allen, Ms. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Wannarski. City council passed official file ordinance number 132020, finally by a seven, nay zero.
Jimmy, that's number two. Did you say?
I'm sorry.
Under final passage ordinance number two.
We jumped to three from one.
I did. Well. Oh, you were. Does any have it in their folder?
No.
Well, I'm sorry about that. Uh, you'll have to excuse me for a minute.
Might go a little soft shoe? What, that little song or anything for a little soft shoe?
I don't see. Oh, so while we're all waiting, there is a button on the lower left-hand side of your screen. If you click your screen, you'll see a little microphone button that will mute and unmute you.
Right now, mine is correct.
Yeah, so that means you're muted.
Does it do it on its own?
No, I haven't done it here.
Oh.
But if you're gonna say something, just make sure that you're unmuted. Yeah, so can we give you a signal light? Yeah, sure, whatever you want to do.
Are you just gonna start a rant?
No.
Are you unmuted, muted? Boy, it already muted.
Eighteen rows to find one of the ordinances for final passage. Did not make it out here with her, but there's a few snags. That's the worst that happens today. We'll be good. That's what happens when you're short staffed.
Okay. Council file number 16155, official ordinance number 112020. An ordinance of the city of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of a guarantee agreement with the Erie Parking Authority and compliance with the provisions thereof, approving the issuance by the authority of guaranteed parking revenue bond series of 2020A and guaranteed parking revenue bonds taxable series of 2020B in an amount not to exceed $23,500. Repealing all inconsistent ordinances, directing the proper officers of the city to necessary actions, and further directing that this ordinance shall take effect immediately. And I don't have the sponsors for that. Does anybody remember who sponsored that?
Uh, yeah, as a liaison, I'd be the sponsor.
Okay, and who's your committee member?
I'm not sure who's the committee member. I did have a quick comment before we vote on this one, just to, just to let everybody know some of the information contained within.
Okay. By Mr. Brennan, second by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance bill number 16155. And now known as official file ordinance number 112020. Be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski.
I just had a quick, quick comment on that one, if I could.
Okay.
Yes, the, well, I didn't say attorney Tim sent it was available to answer any questions, but now he was available at the last meeting, and I think he answered all the questions and gave some information, but just real quick before the vote, it was refinancing 2010, 2015, 2016 bonds, four million in campaign improve or capital improvements, parking garage lighting, modernized garage elevation elevators, upgrade parking system technology, and it was a $2.2 million savings after the costs, and the timing was important here since they are taking advantage of the lower interest rates. So I just wanted to put that information there just for clarification and, and counsel information. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Allen, Ms. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Wannarski. City council pass official ordinance number 112020. Finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16158, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $10,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the enterprise zone revolving loan fund for utilization in the flagship slash Commodore five. By Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen, the council file number 16158, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Wannarski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16158 by a seven, nay zero on first read. Council file 16159, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $300,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue providing for the expenditure thereof, the PCCD Calcom violence. By Mr. Brzezinski and second by Mr. Keys. That ordinance, council file ordinance number 16159, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Wannarski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16159 by a seven, nay zero on first read. Council file 16160, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $34,977 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue providing for the expenditure thereof, 2019 justice assistance. By Mr. Brzezinski, second by Ms. Keys, council file ordinance number 16160, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Ms. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Wannarski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16160 by a seven, nay zero on first read. Council file 16161, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $5,000 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from CSX for the purchase of iPads. I'm Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance number 16161, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Ms. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Wannarski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16161 by a seven, nay zero on first read. Uh, that'll conclude the ordinances, but we do have a wave rules before you move on, Mr. President. Okay, just like rules. Somehow they need to continue the agenda, so. Voting on the wave rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Wannarski. This is resolved by the city, or this is by Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen, resolved by the council of the city of Erie. Under the title one of Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, amended, the secretary of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development is authorized to extend financial assistance to communities in the elimination of prevention of slumming or urban blight or activities which will benefit low and moderate income persons or other urgent community development needs. The U.S. Department of HUD has advised the city of the 2020 entitlements, which are as follows, CDBG, $3,172,492, home, $831,284, and ESG, $2,071,36. Roll call, Ms. Allen, Ms. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Wannarski. That'll take us to new business.
Do we have a second? Any separation?
I'm separating number two, a resolution authorizing directing the proper city officials to designate Cameron Mill Drive near SB3 Industrial Park off East Lake Road as Path Black Drive in honor of his revitalization investments and commitment to the Erie community.
Is there any other separations?
Okay. You want me to read that again? Oh, we gotta move the balance, okay. Move the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Witherspoon. Resolved by Mr. Wannarski, second by Mr. Brzezinski, resolved by the council of the city area, that proper city officials are authorized and directed to designate Cameron Mill Drive near SB3 Industrial Park off East Lake Road as Path Black Drive in honor of his revitalization investments and commitment to the Erie community. Discussion?
Yes, I would like to discuss this. I want to give some background on why I'm going to be voting no on this. It dates back to December when we received a request from someone to rename part of West Fourth Street in honor of the longtime late proprietor of Farrell Suparet. The person who asked this for this request had contacted a number of city council people, and I'm the only one who responded, so I brought it to council. I suggested that we establish some kind of criteria for renaming streets, even if it's an honorary renaming, and nothing happened. I also wanted to find out if we actually had a list of how many streets have been renamed in Erie. We don't have such a list in the place where you think it might reside, in the Department of Public Works, and the head of public works said that we should have the city clerk's office go through the ordinances to find, or go through resolutions and find out how many streets have been renamed. Fortunately, when David Brennan came on council in, you know, after he was named to council, he offered to take this up because he is the new liaison to the public works. And then, of course, of course, COVID-19 hit, so he had done a lot of work on this, and we haven't yet had been able to come up with some criteria. For members of the public, I want to read the email that we got from our council president when I asked that we postpone this till we could find the criteria. Um, the council president said, I'm just amazed how something as ba, so basic as this turned into way more than it needed to be. We have done these honorary street namings numerous times in the past with never this much controversy. So anyway, with that being said, a quick business bio, Mr. Black invested over $200 million in Lower East Side facilities known as Black's SB3 Industrial Park, which consists of Hero BX Erie Management Group, Calypso Enterprises, Black Insurance Group, Diamond Shadow Security, with over 200 employees, with more to be added. So anyway, this street, parentheses, Hammer Mill Street, is off East Lake Road and dead ends at railroad tracks. I believe it shows a little appreciation for someone who had a vision and invested in our Lower East Side. With that being said, said it's staying on the agenda, and to quote a fellow council member voted up and down, and I hope this doesn't turn into a grandstanding, two words, grandstanding, issue tomorrow during our council meeting. I am not grandstanding. I believe that city council should act with processes and procedures. I also want to point out that the information that says that this streets have been renamed in the past without controversy is actually not true. There was a big brouhaha in 1998 when Councilman Witherspoon proposed renaming part of East 18th Street, Irma Lindsay Boulevard. This became a controversy because Mayor Savaccio had previously, on her own, without council's approval, renamed East 9th Street, Asia Uwe Way. And according to the story I found in the Erie Times News from 1998, there was confusion on East 18th Street because people didn't know if this was an actual renaming, whether addresses have to change. And the story also pointed out that part of the street wasn't even a boulevard. So yes, there has been controversy in the past. I believe that to also say that, hey, this ends in a dead end, so it's no big deal. I would point out that this street also is where our Benjamin Wiley Charter School is. Hammer Mill is part of our history. Now, this, the way the resolution is read, it is written, it doesn't say this is an honorary renaming. So I'm left to say, I'm voting no. I'm not grandstanding. I have to wonder how many times I have to make requests for processes and procedures and be ignored. It happens many times on council. It's very frustrating to be an elected official to try and suggest that we have processes and procedures, whether it's naming a new council person, as we did with eventually with David Brennan, which is, you know, a big deal, to honorarily renaming a street. I don't know why this came out of the blue, what the motive was for it, is there an anniversary for Black Management Group? When Flo Fabrizio, after he passed away, somebody had proposed renaming his longtime street after him, there's a street named after baby Ron Steele, longtime director of GCAC after he died. We have streets renamed after historic figures in Erie, the Harry Burley Way, the Lawrence family, and some of the ones that I know that we have pending. The League of Women Voters would like to rename a street after the woman who was, I believe, the first elected woman county commissioner in Erie. Johnny Johnson has asked about renaming some kind of street after the Kennedy family, either where Charles Kennedy Jr. lived, or where mother and Charles Kennedy had their home on German Street. All good and worthy causes. But we ought to know why we're doing it. Thank you.
President, how many, how many people are renaming every country? Those are these are political honorary renaming, correct? I can't recall.
And I've been around a little while.
There was an issue twenty years ago, over twenty years ago, I was.
Not aware of it. And with that being said, in my ten years on council, any of them that came in front of us, there was never a major issue. I mean, with somebody, if they're naming a street after somebody, they were committed to this community, gave back to the community, had a foresight in our community, I just, and I'll be honest with you, it just. But no, no, nothing that I know of at this time.
I agree with Liz that maybe we should have a process, maybe a fee so that signs are paid for, but other than that, we're riding a dead horse. I call for the question.
Ed, I didn't hear what you said at the end.
Go on, I'm sorry.
Mr. President.
I, I don't want to be, I would like to say one more thing. You called for the question.
Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. President, am I coming through? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
First thing I want to say is that I don't believe everything I read in the paper. And I was around on council when we named Irma Lindsay Boulevard. And we did discuss it, and folks did not have to change their address, and we simply put a sign in the boulevard, and there was no major community problems and issues at that time.
My God.
If we're going to, if we're talking about changing a street, an entire street, and renaming it, yes, we need a process, yes, you have to notify the post office, yes, you have to get okay from the majority of the residents and businesses on that street or boulevard. That's a process. Yes, we need to have one, just in case that come up. Because if we wanted to change 12th Street from Pittsburgh Avenue to Franklin to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, there's a lot of work that needs to go into that. All right? Now, I think we could use, in the future, an application process even for the honorary. And that includes name, address, phone numbers, and then you add, what did this person do? What did this person add to the community? I've turned down two requests personally because I could not figure out what these two people have contributed to the community, and they are very good people. But I don't know what they have contribute to the community, so I didn't even bring it up, and I don't intend to bring it up. But once we find out that there is a person that deserves recognition, then we need to have that application, review the application, and that person should have been involved in the community, have done. involved in the community, have done things for at least five, maybe 10 years, not one year or two years. And if we can do it while the person's alive, great. If he has passed or she has passed and we recognize that they have done, have given some contribution, then we can do that. So I'm supporting the honorary without a doubt. All right, we have, for example, I don't know the guy, but this guy named Witherspoon had a streak honorary named after him. And he didn't even know about it. We were just having a picnic for the community and they drug me over to the pole and pulled down this sheet and there it was. I appreciate it, but I, what I do and what I did for the community, I wasn't looking for anything. So why are we going through all this? I say, pass this. In the future, we ask, I would say, a sign or ask Liz and Dave to head the committee and do two applications. One for changing the name totally of the street and one for honorary. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a comment if I could. I had brought this up just because I just needed more information. I know in the past we've done a lot of honorary renaming. But here I just didn't know for sure, you know, given Mr. Black and all the property owns on there. I was thinking it was actually a street renaming. So I was looking for clarification and also some more information on Mr. Black. Of course, I've read about him in the newspaper, all his investments in the community, and I thank him greatly for that. And I thank him for all his contributions to nonprofits. I know he's been quite, quite active, so definitely he's worthy of it. But I was just trying to clarify that it was an actual honorary renaming. What was included and just some more information on Mr. Black. Unfortunately, we're not together in council. We usually have discussions. But maybe just an email ahead of time, and I know I did talk to the president and we did clarify something. So I was just trying to clarify everything before the meeting. There's only a couple of days to prepare. And I, as liaison to Public Works, I will be proposing a resolution to clarify this in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Rose.
Ms. Allen. Ms. Allen.
I'm voting no. And I wanted to say something before I was not allowed to add something. I want to say that we are in a dangerous time when somebody says they don't believe what they read in the newspaper. I forwarded to all of you the story from 1998.
No, I don't. No, I don't. No, I don't.
We're calling for the vote, please.
I'm voting no, and I'm standing up for freedom of the press.
Well, that's fine.
And the honesty of the press.
Get a job.
The vote, please.
It's all of our job.
Get a job.
Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Winarst, this one. We're responding so that the implementation of the activities can be expedited to the precedent and circumstances the community is facing due to COVID-19. Discussion?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, yeah. Well, I just thought it should be noted that, you know, because of the COVID-19 that the city of Erie has, you know, received nearly $3 million of unintended funding and that we're immediately taking action to use those funds to help people in the community. And they're listed and we don't take it lightly. Because of the COVID-19, we didn't get a chance to have some of the deep discussions about how all the money would be appropriated. And I just think that that should be noted.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Nothing much to say except to congratulate the firemen that passed the captain's test. I won't mention names until they are officially signed up, but we're very proud of them. Thank you.
Mr. Keys.
Only that I hope everyone is staying safe, social distancing, and that's all.
Thank you very much.
Jim, turn on the speaker.
Ms. Allen, can you hear us?
Liz, turn your speaker.
We'll go with Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Oh, there's Liz now.
Liz, can you hear us now? Liz, can you unmute yourself?
I have unmuted myself.
Any comments?
Yes, I do. Last week, I think it was on Friday afternoon, Michael Keys and I participated in a community conversation on Facebook, actually on Zoom, and it was shared on Facebook by Alvin Tucker. And we were with Angela McNair and Abdullah Washington. It was about COVID-19. It was an amazing conversation. It lasted nearly two hours. And there were a couple of takeaways from that, one of which was Angela McNair from the school board said that she feels that there should have been more community discussion about reopening Erie County. She, as a school board member, she feels that we aren't aware of the community of a lot of the hardships that Erie school children have faced in transitioning to online learning. Big Wash, Abdullah Washington, talked about the need more than ever for a community college. And I, and Michael Keys, you talked about a lot of things from your perspective. I think my takeaway was that, as they say, we're all in this together. I think that it's really important that as city council, that we also listen to what the school board, how school board is reacting to the reopening. In my view, much of the emphasis has been on get the economic engine starting again. I was actually quite alarmed to hear Sharp Behringer say yesterday at the Kathy Dahlkamp press conference that our rate, they expect based on modeling that our rates could double or triple. So I don't know when or how city council and the school board and likely county council could get together in some type of community presentation, but I think it's needed. My second thing is that when we had our briefing with the mayor last week, I had asked about whether there's a possibility of extending the face deadline for property taxes till the end of the year. There is legislation pending at the state Capitol to do this. I was disappointed that the mayor jumped from, immediately said, no, he wants people to pay on time, and then talked about the fact that, hey, learner applications are going to start beefing up again. On the one hand, we're telling people, hey, you get a tax abatement for 10 years. But on the other hand, we're saying in the time of a pandemic, you better pay, you are going to have to pay the normal penalty if you don't pay your property taxes on time. Now, county council did extend the face time till the end of the year, although from what I'm looking at from around the state, county council in its resolution urged other Erie County municipalities to do the same. But I think that that may need legislative action. So I think it's something that we should look at. We should know how much potential we would lose by not having the penalty on there. But I think it's all about an attitude and our property owners have borne a lot of the brunt of trying to keep the city afloat for a long time. So that's my position on that.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. I participated on Saturday in a distance cleanup at the Our West Bay Front. It was just simply putting your gloves on, getting a garbage bag, picking up as much as you wanted, taking it home and putting it in your garbage, which I did. Thank you for the Our West Bay Front who organized that. But I also encourage people who have the time. It's outside. If you put your gloves on and a mask, you can do this in your own neighborhoods and then just bring the garbage back home and putting it out on the garbage if, you know, you feel comfortable doing that. I am checking up on people as needed and I encourage others to do that. This is such sad times. And, you know, so many people out there are dealing with so many issues of finances and troubling domestic issues and whatnot. So I encourage everybody to seek help as needed. There are community helpers. There are the 211 line information. I listened to Dr. Rachel Levine in the afternoons and the governor is on in the afternoon and our Erie County Executive as well. And I thank the mayor for his mayor minutes that he has on. So people are trying to reach out to us. And I encourage the Zoom meetings. Thank you. There are some fire issues. I thank the fire department for the doing their part. And please, even if you're doing food, we should not be burning if the wind is above 10 miles an hour. So, and no burning of your twigs or anything. Please put them in garbage cans and let the garbage people take care of the garbage. People celebrating birthdays are, you know, going through things. Happy birthday to Mark L. Lasoff, who's 16 years old this week and wants to be a police officer. My aunt, Sister Carolyn Gorni Kepkowski, a Benedictine sister, has a Hallmark birthday, May 20th. And if people would like to, I'm sure if you send a birthday card to the Benedictine sisters, they would pass it along to her. So happy birthday and happy Mother's Day this weekend for the mothers. Because these are historical times and a mother, as always, is like a nurse, a psychologist. Now, you know, an educator leads us in faith and everything. It's like the glue sometimes of the family network. So happy Mother's Day to all. I'm helping out with the neighborhood surveys that our city planner is doing. And I thank everyone. Our people are still accessible. Chris Groner in our Economic and Growth Department, thank you for all your hard work. The mayor and the mayor's team, Public Works, they are accessible. I've been able to contact them by way of phone call or email. So just to let everyone know out there that we're still taking citizen complaints with Mossela and, you know, trying to do our share. These are challenging times. So be safe, wear the mask and reach out and still have the hope that is needed during these times. Thank you.
David.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, first of all, I just want to say a little thing about the pandemic. You know, as everyone else is these days, there's so much going on with job loss and health issues. So my heart really goes out to everybody. I know many people that are not working right now and definitely there's some issues that trying to get back to work is really the issue that we need to have happen, but of course safely. I've been paying this close attention to the stats and the location cases. So hopefully we'll all be back to work at some point when it's safe. But again, thank you to our essential workers and to, you know, everyone that's supporting our local businesses. I did want to have too many, two other items I wanted to mention. The Start Preservation Task Force, I'm the chair of that group, and I just wanted to give a quick update. We'll be given a more formal update to council in the near future when maybe we can get together or have a study session. But it's a two-year task force would be ending in June of 2021. Some of the current tasks are the building surveys, ordinance reviews, neighborhood preservation toolkit is kind of what we're working on also. Design guidelines, certified local government designation, which allows us to then seek funding for historic preservation activities. And then we're working on a timeline for the preservation plan. So we'll be, I'll be updating council and the group will be updating council hopefully in the near future. Study sessions, we have a study session with the EDDC and also the Erie Downtown Partnership coming up May 14th at 5:30. It'll be a Zoom meeting, of course. We'll talk about their current and future initiatives and projects. I received many, you know, questions about different things going on with EDC. So I wanted to, you know, have those addressed and have those questions at that time. And I'm also, I mentioned this to council, I believe, at the last meeting, I met with a young year professionals back in March and they'd still like to get together and have a discussion with council to talk about the getting more involved and maybe having a seat at the table for communications. And I'm targeting June 18th at 5:30, but we'll see how that works out with everyone's schedule. And that's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to say that we lost a great man in our community, Mr. Everett Tucker, an educator, professor at Penn State Barron, a member of the Erie School Board. He passed on Thursday. His funeral services will take place in Cincinnati today at 2 o'clock. And we send, on behalf of myself and council, we just send the message of sorrow to the entire family. I wanted to let you know that the Erie Housing Authority during this pandemic has decided not to bring any new residents into their system for housing. Nor will they put out any residents. Regardless if they didn't pay the rent or if they broke a rule, no one will be put out of their residence until, and if it's a rent issue because individuals aren't working, they'll make plans. Once this pandemic resides, they will make arrangements to pay it. And they're not going to ask them to pay it all at once. They'll just break it down and stretch the months out. So I think Mr. Mike Fraley is doing a great job there at the Housing Authority. Next, I have a question and I'm not looking for a long answer, but just, and the administration can give me a call later. CDBG summer program monies. Are we going to issue or award the total amount that we originally allocated? Because the summer months activities will not take place. It doesn't start in April. It may not start in June. It may not happen in July. And I just don't think we ought to give them the total allocation if the programs are not taking place. And that includes the program that I've ran for 30 years. This was the 30th year and we were planning on something big for the community, but that will not happen. And maybe we can do that next year. So just something to think about down the road and see how you want to handle it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mel. Very brief. Just want to thank the City of Erie, Erie Strong. The residents here have been very compliant and listening to what needs to be done to help us get through this. Appreciate the mayor taking the lead and getting the word out for everybody to be safe and appreciate the colleagues on council as well. Want to thank Ms. Schaff for her due diligence. Vice President Schaff, she's kept council informed daily on the happenings, any updates with this COVID-19, and really appreciate her efforts because all of us can't get on every day to listen to the updates. It's tough enough sometimes once a week. We do have a finance meeting following our council meeting today to get some updates there. Like Ms. Schaff had mentioned, to the mothers out there, happy Mother's Day. If they're like the mother I know or my wife I know, they've had to do a little more cooking than we normally or she would normally would have had to do before. And delicious, but I won't mind, wouldn't mind going out once in a while. But happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. And that'll take us to the mayor.
Hey, thanks a lot. This is really Renee's meeting, the morning meeting. I'm really happy. I got a chance to sit in and listen, but I'm going to turn over to Renee.
Good morning, everyone.
Renee, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, I'll just share one thing. We're really pushing census response rate now. We've started a strategic marketing campaign within the city since most of these census tracts within the urban core are reporting below 50%, whereas the census tracks surrounding the urban core are well over 50%. And so we're really trying to get the word out about how important it is for people to complete the census. It's very easy. This year you can complete it by mail. You can complete it online at my2020census.gov and you can also call in to complete the census. We have a lot of information that's circulating right now. We've created, there will be banners, posters, commercials, radio spots. We're trying to hit people from every angle. There will also be a social media campaign explaining that the funding that we're allocated, for instance, the CDBG funding, the emergency solutions grants, the home funds, the money that we got, the supplemental CDBG funds that we got to respond to COVID-19, were all a result of our 2010 census count, which we know we were undercounted in. If we had been, if we had an accurate count in 2010, we would have received more funding to respond to COVID-19. So it's really important. The money that's going to the community centers for those summer programs, that comes from this allocation. This is, this is from our census count. So we can't stress how important that is. We're asking people, we're working with the community centers, we're working with the multicultural Community Resource Center and the International Institute and other nonprofit groups that receive CDBG funding from the city to help us communicate the importance of this and how it will impact people for the next 10 years. So I just wanted to, again, get that word out. Thanks, everyone.
Attorney Betsid, do you have anything to add this morning? We can't hear you.
I do not have anything. Can you hear me?
Thank you all. We're adjourned this meeting and probably in about 10 minutes get started with our finance meeting.
Thank you. Thank you all. We're adjourned the meeting and probably in about 10 minutes get started with our meeting.
Mr. Mulville told me they've written up 22 building permits in the last two days. So as we thought, once this COVID-19 goes or the emergency session goes into a yellow phase, the builders should be back trying to build as long as people are willing to have them come to their houses. So last month was a bad month for those line items, but it looked like there should be an upturn there. And looking back where we talked a month ago today, the building permits were up to $200,000 compared to the year before, only at about $80,000 as of the end of last month. So the builders, I mean, I think with, with the passing of the new Lurde Law, the builders are going to start building again. Looking back down the rest of the page or most of the first page, page two are just our grants that the state gives us. Some of those things come in. Most of those are just timing issues. On page two, a couple, or page three, sorry, a couple line items of note, the parking fines, we haven't been able to institute the collection of some of the delinquents just due to the COVID-19. And once that ramps up, there should be an influx of cash there. Then further down the page, a lot of those other things, the fines, state police fines, parking fines, or state remittances or federal remittances. But down the page, I think one we're going to be following all year is the amusement taxes, line 3756, and the things David Rockland does each year are down considerably. And it doesn't look like a lot of that is going to happen this year. Yeah. Moving on to page four, our, the general fund roll-up of expenditures. Some things to note, overtime's down a little bit this year. And we talked about last month, the fire department with all the new people being hired, the fact that they have to have, they meaning the department, has to have people in working while the new trainees are training. So their overtime's up. When you look at the full, oh, you lost me? No, I'm not on mute. Can you hear me?
We can hear your phone.
Not quite.
Okay.
Anybody else here? There we go.
Okay. So the overtime is down a little bit. The police department overtime is down considerably. Chief Dan Spazarni has done a great job with juggling schedules, even with some of his people being off. So another line item down, the employee payouts are up considerably from where we had projected due to some of the extra people retiring from the fire department. Line item 417, pension contribution. You'll see that we made a contribution earlier this year than we normally did in the fall. So we're going to start making payments monthly or quarterly wherever we can in anticipation of the November due date. But with the market being down, we thought if we could start putting some money in and our money managers buying stock at very low rates, you know, it could help out by the end of the year. Some of the services and supplies of note that are material to changes, repair maintenance, a little bit, professional services, just a timing issue. And you'll see that heat, light, and power down considerably between last year at this time and this year at this time, just the milder winter. We're not using as much natural gas or electricity. So that pretty much hits the general fund. Again, we'll post the full book on SharePoint. So when anybody has any questions, you know, please give us a call. The sewer revenue fund, which was page six, you'll see that the revenues are up a little bit. The billing there is the billing from the reports we get from the Water Authority, billing for the first four months of the year is within 2% of where it was last year. So people are still using the same amount of water. We'll, you know, we'll continue to monitor that and see where the billing is. It's really about it with the sewer department. When you look through, you look through their revenue expenditures, everything's pretty much online with where it was last year percentage-wise. And then the refuse department.
Sorry.
Refugees Department, you'll see that the collections are up a little bit. But we, remember, we increased the rates 11%. So we're going to see by the end of the year, an increase in that rep, this is page 12, I'm sorry. We're going to see an increase in the refuse collection charges by the end of the year. So any differentiation between budget and actual or where it should be is more of a timing issue than anything else based on when the Water Authority got those bills out. Another point to note back on page, page 26 of the book. Our, the risk management fund benefits are down from last year to this year at this time. And that includes both the health insurance and the workers' comp insurance. And the health insurance, as we've talked about year after year, you have two good years, two bad years, three even years. But the health or the workers' comp insurance, our claims right now for the first four months of the year are the lowest they've been in 10 years. So I think that's good. The people are making sure, you know, their safety's number one with what they're doing at work. So that's really about it with the monthly revenue expenditure report. Anybody have any questions? Or once you get a chance to look through the whole book, please give us a call and we can go through line items or any line of questions that anybody may have.
I have a question.
Okay.
My question relates to the fire department, Fire Bureau. They are answering fewer calls with rigs for, you know, breathing, difficulty breathing because of COVID. Is anybody keeping track of any kind of data? Well, in two different ways. One, from the health perspective as to whether that's impacted people who have called for first responders. But on the other hand, the potential for savings when we aren't sending out fire rigs to respond with emergent care. If that's not being tracked, I think it's something that should be looked at. I want to go back.
Okay.
I just want to, I just want to finish my sentence. When I was on that community conversation with Michael Keys last week, we had some good discussion about how our experiences with this pandemic are going to change a lot of the ways we do things. So I'm wondering if there's potential to examine whether going forward, we send those fire rigs out for first responders. I'm not suggesting it, but I think it's something that should be on a list somewhere to keep track of and to be able to come back to council and let us know what the experience has been. Anybody?
I'd like to answer that. To answer the first part or the second part of your question, yes, the fire department through data that's collected at the 911 center examines every call that the fire department goes out on every time they leave the building. And they have code summaries for everything that they, they track how many fires they go to, how many overpressure ruptures they go to, how many EMS calls they make, how many hazardous condition calls they take, service, just regular service calls, false alarms, calls due to severe weather and any other type of special incidents. Yes, they track all that. Now, to answer the first question without talking to Chief Walco, I couldn't answer whether or not they're internally tracking COVID-19 calls due to shortness of breath or anything like that. So that's one maybe the liaison to fire could ask the chief about.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Paul? Paul, have we, I know it's only been a week. Have we advanced at all or gained anything with the water lease deal and us?
Well, I sent everybody, I collected some information from Paul Voitek with, and this is the spreadsheet you received from me yesterday, some information from Paul. He had spoken to his underwriters and talked to them about what they felt as of last Friday that we would, or they would, they would receive in a refunding of their, their bond or refunding, a bond refunding equal to the lease payments they owe us. And then I talked to one of the underwriting firms we've used the last couple bond issues to find out from them what would happen if we got X dollars from the Water Authority for that lease payment. And then we paid that down on our debt. So the result of what Mr. Voitek gave me, along with one of the underwriting firms that we use, is those two spreadsheets that you received yesterday afternoon. So open for discussion if everybody's had a chance to look at those or if you'd want me to go through those things line by line or column by column to talk about those. Maybe that might be a little bit better. But also in conjunction with that, due to the intricacy of this, this, this transaction with all the moving parts, with the Water Authority having to issue bonds, and we have to make sure what they're doing is, you know, acceptable to us from a cash standpoint and how we plan on using the money once we get the money. The mayor and I spoke to a firm last Thursday afternoon called the Susquehanna Group. And some of you may remember the Susquehanna Group. They've worked with the city in 2005 and then 2008 or nine on a couple sewer bonds when we got rid of some old swap debt that those, that the sewer authority had. And then the Susquehanna Group came in and helped us out in 2011 with, with looking into a bond issue we had back then. And they're a consulting firm that specializes in municipal or county or statewide debt. And they told us they'd be interested and willing to help us out. Obviously, they do this work for a fee, but they laid out a plan for us where they would look at what, what the Water Authority's planning on doing and examine that and set up a decision schedule, do some cash flow calculations, you know. And I know Jim and Ed and everybody's had questions about what, you know, what is going to be the one-time lease payment? What are we going to do with that? And they'd be willing to put some schedules together to show what, you know, what we could do with that money, how we could do it, how we could do it, and, you know, why we would do what we were planning on doing and give us some advice as to whether or not ideas we may have, maybe good ideas or bad ideas. And then also, you know, they, they, they work on projections on where, where that water money could go or what it could do. So. So I wanted to bring that up because I think as an independent third party, they may be helpful to us in understanding how, how we can, you know, how we can.
Benefit the most.
Pardon me, Jim?
Benefit the most.
Yeah, benefit the most. I mean, I, I, these guys, like I said, they're, this is what their job is. They're, they, they deal with these bond issues all the time. And, you know, they gave the mayor and I a couple of suggestions on the phone that, that, that were very good suggestions. So I, I'd like to bring an agreement forth at the next council meeting to engage these guys. They said the fee would be for all the work they're going to do. It would be $12,000, including both bond issues by the Water Authority and the defeasance that we will do after we get the money from the, from the Water Authority up to, and not to exceed $22,000. Now they didn't think $22,000 would ever be reached, but you know, if this, we're, we're hoping that we can all come to an agreement in the next, this council meeting, next council meeting, the council meeting after that to move forward this and Paul Voitek can, you know, get his board to agree to all this. You know, in, in, in something like that, just dealing with a hundred million dollars one way and a hundred million dollars another way. There's a lot of math and legalities to this. You know, it'd be on the short end of the stick, but if this thing goes out six months or a year and it takes forever, then, you know, they have to cover themselves and say, hey, if, you know, we're involved with the city for a six or seven or eight month period on this one deal, you know, we could end up losing money on this. So. I think if, if everybody could think about this and give me some guidance, I guess I'll, you know, go through Jim and I'll talk to Jim about it. We could get this on council and then we could have them, and again, as an independent third party, do this work for us. So, yes.
You know, some of us never got that. You explained the difference between going through Erie Water Works and doing it independently in one phone call, but some of us were not on that phone call. So we don't even have like even a nugget of what the difference is. If you could explain that.
If you don't, if you could check your emails from yesterday afternoon.
Right. I, I have the spreadsheet. I'm just saying that.
That's what I said. I was going to go through that column by column and explain to everybody what, you know, what that, what, what this stuff means.
But we don't even know what it means to have it be financed by the city of Erie. If you could just do a really layperson's explanation of that, that would be helpful.
Well, the first, the first, I guess what we've been listening to from the, the Water Authority for, you know, well, I can go back 15 years. So for 15 years, but it's really ramped up in the last six months is they would like to prepay the, the lease they have with us. They have a lease right now that's running out to 2050 and they'd like to extend that lease for 10 years after that to 2060. And then take the value, that value, which is about $180 million and give us a lump sum payment upfront equal, you know, in time value of money, present value terms, what that $181 million would be worth. We would then take that money and use it in any way or fashion that we see fit. The mayor's proposing to use that money and pay down our debt. So we can help, you know, obviously help the city budget by getting rid of all those four and 5% bonds that we have hanging out there. So in scenario one, the Water Authority would issue bonds on their own. And then they would give us the money that they received from those bonds. And then we would have, we would do something with that money. Scenario two would be where we don't the lease prepayment from the Water Authority, but we issue bonds in the same fashion equal to the lease that the Water Authority will be giving us for the next 30 years. And we get a lump sum bond cash influx upfront. And then we use that to pay down our debt. So we're trading off old, old debt service at higher interest rates with new debt service at much lower interest rates in, in that, in that scenario. The one scenario, we're using the Water Authority to issue debt to give to us to pay down our higher interest rated debt. The other scenario, we're, we're doing it ourselves and trading higher interest debt for lower interest debt.
Okay. And Susquehanna would have a role in that or are they just strictly looking at the water works?
No, they, they, they would help us either way. They would help us either way. And the one, and if you, when you look at those spreadsheets, the thing to remember about both of the, well, deal number one, the Water Authority deal. And, and I'm looking over at my spreadsheets myself right now. The Water Authority has made one of the stipulations of doing the deal with us that that we extend that lease by 10 years. So one of the, I mean, when you look at the bottom line, the, the amounts we'll receive by doing this deal with the Water Authority are obviously going to be higher because we're extending the lease by 10 years. And those last 10 years are all 5 million, 5.2 million. And the last year, 2060, it's actually 5.4 million. So we're adding about $50 million that we're going to receive in lease payments from 2051 to 2060. So the amounts, if, if we did the deal on our own, right now we have a lease with them through the year 2050. So it's, it's 10 years shorter.
Thanks, Paul.
And a couple of other things to note when we're talking about this and when council's making decision as to which way, you know, they feel you should go. And this is just, I mean, I don't want to pontificate on this, but right now that lease is out to 2050. The Water Authority is only allowed to issue debt. And this is, you know, the Pennsylvania Local Unit Debt Act, they're only allowed to issue debt out through the timeframe of their lease with us. So I think we all know sometime in the next few years, Paul Voitek or whoever's running the Water Authority at that time is going to need to issue debt for some type of capital improvement. And they're going to come back to city council. What, you know, whether it's this group of seven or a different group of seven, they're going to come back to city council at that time and ask city council for a lease extension. So tho- those numbers, even though it's at right now, the contractual lease agreement ends in 2050. I think we all know since we don't want, we as the city administration don't want to take that plant back and start running it. Sooner or later that lease is going to be extended.
And that sort of gives us a little wild card.
Yeah. And I will say this, in 2008, in 2008, when the last time the city, the city extended the lease for the Water Authority, they made a payment to us of 2, 2.5 million dollars to do that. So they, you know, I don't want to, in, in movie terms, I don't want to say they paid tribute to us, but they gave us two and a half million dollars, which we put in, which we, council at that time, city council put that money in the water reserve so that we could use that for future capital funding.
Paul, also there's that degradation we got to remember too.
Yes. If, I guess then if, if you don't mind me droning on for five more minutes, I, I'll go through the two spreadsheets and spreadsheet or spreadsheet one at the bottom that says EWW Finance. The first column is the city of Erie debt. That's the current debt schedule that we have. The second column is the lease payments that the Water Authority will give us, including that 10-year extension. The third column is the new debt for the city of Erie. If $85 million is used to pay down our current debt. And that comes from, I got it, uh, last Thursday, I talked to Paul Voitek and had him call his bond underwriters to say, if we were to do this deal today, what amount of money would we get? And they were projecting 85, or no, I'm sorry, 95 to 96 million dollars at that time, irrespective of any fees. So if you take the 95 million and then take away the $10 million the mayor wanted to save upfront for any type of, any, anything, any type of problems we may have or any type of needs we may have, that's why I use the 85 million dollars. So the first number, $95 million came from Paul Voitek and his underwriting firm. I then called a separate underwriting firm to say, if I had 90, 85 million dollars, what would we be able to do with that, making us a level debt service for the next 19 years? And it comes back at about 1.5 million dollars. So the fourth, the fourth column is what that does in savings to the city of Erie. So the fifth column is what the general fund portion of that savings is. Cause right now the general fund portion of our debt service is 88% of the total debt service. And then I said, one, another one of the stipulations, along with the 10-year extension of the water lease, the Water Authority is asking us to delete their payment of any curb cut degradation fees. And it's about $350,000 the last three years. And I know, I think David, it was you that mentioned last week that 350,000 today is not going to be $350,000 three years, five years, 10 years from now. But I just, I left that number in there as 350. And I think we all know that's not going to be that in the future, but then I subtracted out. And the last column is the net savings to the general fund. Now my caveat to these numbers in the savings numbers is I did not discount back any of these numbers at present value at bond rates or treasury bill rates. I mean, these are just in today's dollars, this is what this is worth. So that's, that's where we're at if we were to do this deal with the Water Authority. The very final row, the first 20 years, I thought that was an important number because the first 20 years mirrors what our, our current debt service schedule is. And as you can see, there's a savings over the next 20 years to the general fund of about $47 million. Okay. And then the, the second spreadsheet, the COE finance, obviously city of Erie finance. It follows about the same path where the current, the first column is this current city debt schedule. The second column is the current lease schedule irrespective of that 10 years, 10 years extra. Because obviously we wouldn't be extending the, the lease between the city of Erie and the Water Authority if we, if we did this on our own. The third column is what if we got, again, the numbers I got gave us about, if we did this on our own, we get about 78 million dollars. And if we took seven, 68 million of it and paid down our debt, we'd be left with about 2.1 million dollars in debt. And then the savings, the column over, two columns over, the savings column shows what the savings would be to the city of Erie. And the final column is the general fund portion, that 88% of, of the total savings. Now in this column, there's no subtraction of any degradation fees either. Because if we did this on our own, obviously there'd be no change to the agreement between us and the Water Authority. So we'd still get the Water Authority money. And then they'd still pay us the degradation fee. So looking at that bottom line, the first 20 years, there'd be about $42 million in savings versus $47 million if we did the Water Authority deal. Not that $5 million isn't a lot of money, but it's, it's kind of about the same thing in doing it either way for those first 20 years. Again.
Susquehanna will help us, will help you and then us figure out the most prudent thing to do. Is that, my understanding, is that correct? We'll get.
They're absolute, yes. They will, yes. But one of the things Liz is they'll say that this is a good deal or that's a, you know, this is, but they, they get, any of these financial advisors get leery on saying you should do this or you should do that because, you know, I, I guess.
They don't want that liability, but they would.
That's exactly it. That's exactly.
They would be able to give us scenarios, I assume, to help us make the decision.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah. Doesn't seem as though the mayor and I are trying to push an agenda. I mean, that, you know, we, we can lay out the plan for you. But, you know, what, you're going, you're the ones that are going to vote on it.
Hey, Paul?
Yeah.
For the escalation costs, I know I mentioned it last time, but can, or degradation cost? Can there be an escalation? So we get the full picture here that, that shows how much construction go up each year?
Well, David, right now that $350,000 is what the ordinance says. So, you know, I, I do, if you want, you want, I mean, could we say that the next city council is going to raise that by 3%? I mean, I, I'm just going on based on what, you know, where we're at right now. I mean, you and I know that probably five years from now, council is going to revisit that curb cut fee and say it's too low, but I don't know what they're going to raise it on. So I don't want to put in, you know, a 2% raise, not knowing 2% to be an, an exact number.
Knowing the future, of course, 20 years, the construction costs will double. So that's all I'm saying.
Absolutely no doubt. You know, what if council never has an appetite for raising that fee? I mean, I'm, not that I'm playing devil's advocate.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with you. That's going up. There's no doubt that council's going to revisit fees every year and they're going to look at that fee five years from now and say, hey, cost went up, it's got to go up. But right now that per, per the ordinance we have in place right now, that's the number.
Yeah. I think, got it. That make, that makes sense.
But even with that being said, could we just do a column with the 3% increase on that fee?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's easy. You want me to add 3% every five years? I mean, I can do that. Yes, absolutely.
That wouldn't, that would make sense.
Paul, what's the difference between going with Susquehanna or the PFM?
PF or Susquehanna Group does this. This is what they do.
Okay.
Just so you know, Paul, we all don't have that spreadsheet. We're using our phone. So between Michael and Ed and myself, we don't have that sheet in front of us or we didn't print it out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. We sent that out yesterday at 1:06. I sent that out.
Paul, do you know how to share it on your computer? You can do share screen if you have the technology there.
I'm sure I do. I'm on my phone.
You're on your phone. Okay.
I get, yeah, I'm on my phone. I don't have my computer. I'm on my phone.
Share screen the other day.
And time is still of an essence, right, Paul?
Well, the, with the bond market, the way it is, I mean, there's been movement, you know, on a daily basis. Yes. Yes. It would be much better to do this in the next day, week, month than it would be to wait till the fall.
Okay, that comes into play too. And Susquehanna will let us know that also, I'm sure.
Yes. Yes, they will.
So will that be on our next agenda?
Yes.
Money for Susquehanna?
Yes. And Michael, I, to answer that, yes, it, I'd like to put it on the next agenda. And if everybody gives me the okay today, I, I've been, like I said, the mayor and I spoke to them last week. and if everybody gives me the okay today, I, I've been, like I said, the mayor and I spoke to them last week and for an hour, and I talked to them for 10, 15 minutes the day after, and they're, they're ready to go, once I give them the go-ahead.
I think the best, the best thing to do, have a third party, you know, uh, bring their knowledge, you know, to the table, and then we'll have, be able to discuss it from a very work that, you know, we can understand. And I think until we, you know, know what the professionals think is best, that, it's better, you point, you know, we keep going over it, we find out with the professionals, if, you know, uh, I think we had an agreement that, you know, he would want to move forward, but, uh, then, you know, stipulations, what's best, do with it, if we move forward.
And when you're talking a deal of this magnitude, 12 to 22,000 doesn't scare anybody away per se, you know, it's, it's worth the investment.
I think as we've all sat through these bond deals together before, I mean, when, when we start talking about 100,000 dollars in underwriting fees, and 50,000 dollars in legal fees, and 3,000 dollars in printing costs, and, you know, all the things, all the things that go along with this, this money is, is, you know, one, one of the suggestions they gave us last week is, you know, and I've participated in five or six bond deals since I've been here, and, you know, as their solicitor, Ed's, Ed's been through these bond deals, and, and you as council people have all been through these bond deals, but, you know, the, the intricacies of, of dealing with the underwriters, you know, if, if Susquehanna Group can put the scare in the underwriter a little bit, and we can save an eighth of a percentage point on, on sales of these bonds, you know, they're worth their weight in gold, or they, they passed on to us the other day, one of the suggestions they're going to have to us is, you know, Paul Voitek sent me an email that said that we're supposed, we should get based on today's dollars between 95 and 96 million dollars. Well, all of us, you know, if, if I shared that email, which was what he said, you're going to get between 95 and 96 million dollars, we all hear 95 and 96 million, but then all of a sudden, the market moves a little bit the day they want to sell those bonds, um, and, and, and one of the underwriting firms decides they want to hold some of the bonds in inventory, because they know the market's going up in the next week, you know, we, we could say just 10 or 15, 20,000 dollars is nothing in savings, just knowing that we can put, put, you know, in, in layman's terms, put the hammer down on them to say, hey, you don't sell those bonds, I, it doesn't have to be June 1st, it can be June 3rd or June 7th, but make sure we get our 95 and not, you know, not sell them on a specific day. So that, that could be a very big, um, that could be a big savings to us.
Hey, Paul?
Yes.
In these, uh, very uncertain times, I have no problem with moving ahead as far as, uh, the lease goes, but would it make sense, when we don't know what's going to happen by fall, to just take that 95 million, put it in the money market for six or eight months or whatever, and get quarter of a million dollars, maybe in interest? And then, Paul, when our picture is a little more clear.
That could, that could very well. Yeah, that could be a, a good plan.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, that could be a good plan.
That's something the, probably advise us on as well.
Yeah.
Can I, I just chime in again, um, about the value of journalism? So I found a story, lawsuit outlines role borough says McNeese Susquehanna Group played in sue as lease. Middletown Borough, now I haven't had time to check and see what the outcome of this lawsuit was, but Middletown Borough in, uh, the, I, I believe it's Lehigh Val, uh, Lehigh County sued Susquehanna and its former solicitor for, uh, its water lease deal, so I think, as with everything, I'm sorry that, sit, well, I'm not sorry. I'm glad that citizens elected somebody like me to city council who is going to ask critical questions about everything. So I will, I actually know the editor who wrote this story, so I'm going to email him and find out what I can about that. So Google is your friend. Journalism is our country's friend. We just had World Press Freedom Day on Sunday. I'm not going to forget when somebody says that you don't trust what you read in the newspaper, so, sorry.
Don't use me, use my name, man, no problem. I love you, no problem. Because I disagree with you.
Guess who voted against renaming, uh, Irma Lindsay Boulevard, somebody else on council, from that newspaper store, but maybe we shouldn't believe it.
Liz, what was the city, the lawsuit you found?
You should, I understand.
Stick with our finance, please.
This is finance, Jim, Middleton Borough.
We're talking about a vote of 25 years ago.
It, um, no, I'm talking about 2018, Renee, I will text you the information, okay?
And something I'd like to say, getting back to talking about, you know, what we might do either working through the water authority or just issuing bonds ourselves.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're gonna, the consultant, Susquehanna Group, will rely heavily on what their recommendations are, but some of the things I've seen so far make me right now lean towards just doing it ourselves, uh, because we would not be giving up the annual payments from, from the water authority, but we would be giving up at least 350,000 dollars a year from them, it probably would go up in the future. Uh, uh, that's part of the, they won't do it unless we do that. Uh, also, the last time, uh, they extended their, their lease with the city was, I believe, in, uh, 2008, right, Paul?
Yes, correct.
And, and at that time, the city got 2.5 million dollars, uh, which, you know, we put, we set aside, but right now, they want to extend their lease 10 years if they do this and not pay us anything. So there's some, some big numbers that aren't included in the spreadsheet so far, uh, that makes me really lean towards, and again, we'll, we'll listen to Susquehanna, what they recommend, but it really makes me lean towards just, we should issue the bonds ourselves and continue getting all the payments that we get now from the water authority. Just wanted to share my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mayor. We have anything else this morning?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say that somebody on council that sits to my left, tell her that I love her even though I disagree sometimes.
That's what we all have to remember, we got to love everyone.
Um, I have a question. I would like to have, uh, Kaz or Ed say anything if, um, needed with the Treasury's office.
They with us still?
As, as to what, uh, Kathy?
Well, um, as to anything that you might want to say that would enhance our knowledge of the day.
Uh, is Ed still there?
I see he's on mute, I don't know if he's still present.
Yes, I'm still here.
Uh, you have any thoughts, Ed, besides, uh, this, the safety issue, or?
I think that when Paul was going over earlier, he talked about tax collections. Um, so I think he hit on all the points that I would say. Am I right on that, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, I would just tell everybody to, uh, you know, caution in the long term that, uh, people will be out of money. You know, we, we did pretty good because our taxes were early. Uh, I don't know what kind of shape the school district's going to be in, but, uh, these are difficult times, so, you know, if you're thinking about doing anything like aggregating the, the late fees, uh, you're gonna have to work together as a group with Paul to make sure it's the best thing if we do that. Uh, but, you know, from what Ed tells me, we're doing pretty good, but, you know, nobody knows how bad this will get, you know, in the future. I, I, like Paul said, I'm sure our income tax is going to be down in our amusement taxes, and, you know, that's always a, a frightening proposition.
Thanks, Kaz.
Uh, yeah, one, one other thing, I think, I'd like council to be aware of that, I think when we do come back to some norm, uh, we're going to have to come up with a plan to, uh, uh, change the way we do business, I think, so I'll, I'll get together with each one of you.
Oh, this is hilarious.
Hey Kaz, how's that list of delinquencies coming that you're going to be putting together?
Uh, I have to.
One PFM.
Multiple property cars behind?
Ed, that is almost completed.
Super.
And I, and I want to say that in my absence, uh, my deputy has done a great job, and, uh, you know, he's, he's got everything under control and keeps me well aware of it, so if you need anything, uh, don't, uh, don't shy to give either him or I a call, okay?
Yes, sir.
Hey Spoon, thanks for the love, I'm sitting left of you now.
Hey, tell, if you, if you guys don't strike enough, I'm coming back with my own time stories.
Oh, come on, Kaz. Well, thank you all. Uh, any questions, we'll reach out, appreciate all the information.
Jimmy, um, can, oh, sorry, council president. Uh, what should, I mean, what should I do?
Well, I think, like I said, some of us on council have yet to see that revised spreadsheet you sent out, but I believe, without officially voting here, I believe you have the support to get the, uh, uh, hire the group out of, uh,
Okay. Okay.
Good, that's, that's my impression.
By knowing that, if that gets the ball moving quicker to at least get into discussions with them, then, great.